You got five minutes. So. Um.
Oh, is he there?
Oh.
Well, I don't either. Well, I don't either, but I know what other people in that.
I think it was.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
Particularly.
I think.
How much.
I saw this. It should go.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all. And we found. Our. And you know. What was that?
I really. Definitely just. No. What is it there? I don't care. It's nice.
I'm doing.
Yeah.
I. He did try to ask. He should have shown that movie because of. Susan was very tired. You would be.
It's not.
I thought he should imagine myself.
I love him.
Okay.
Right.
And then, you know.
Just one thing that might be.
One.
I hope you saw.
That would pass it to.
Oh, it says it. Yeah, it's just one thing. Do you want?
Yeah.
Did you want?
Yeah, I just. I can do it when I rehearse. You can probably go like that.
That's somewhere. Yes, there's no. Yeah.
I'll be. The middle one, it's a big shot in New York.
Yes, that's true. It was pretty much written down.
Yes.
That's what thirty seven. Actually.
It's.
Yes.
That's freshman.
Fantastic.
Nice. So.
Nice.
This is perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Talk to you.
Well, let's do something.
She. Looking. I've been.
Very good. I don't. I mean. We were too bad. Our. You'll have to show kind of.
Yeah.
Right. So.
Oh, my God. That was funny. It was all they had. And I think it's all. Because I was saying it's so. Flies and their versions. Yeah. Yeah. They look like me. How old? So. So. I kept that. See, my husband's on time.
It's a battalion.
That's weird. I don't drink. I don't drink alcohol.
Were you drunk?
No. No, I don't drink alcohol.
I love it. Oh, yeah. It's a battalion.
Well, very pretty. I mean, if you can drink, I can't. These are pretty.
I can say.
They're all. My father. I don't. They're boxers. Give them that out of the company. So it's. Your man. That's right. I watch it. Five fifty.
Oh, yeah.
So.
You don't want to sit on this. One more.
On the way to order at six P M. Please rise with your eight one join us in the pledge of ladies. I present the. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands. My nation. I am. Invisible. With liberty and justice for all. All right. Approval of treasures warrants payroll warrants from September nineteenth point twenty five, September twenty six, twenty twenty five, and October third. Open for motion. Move to approve payroll warrants for September nineteen, September twenty sixth, and October third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes four zero. Account payable warrants for September twenty third, twenty twenty five, October first, twenty twenty five, and October seventh, twenty twenty five, open for motion. Move to approve the accounts payable warrants for September twenty third, October one, and October seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes four zero. Approval of minutes for September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, open for motion. Move to approve the minutes of September sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any questions? And it's.
Perfect.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes four zero. Committee appointments, herb debt to Ad hoc Economic Development Advisory Committee, open for motion. Move to approve herb debt to the Ad hoc Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Yes.
Oh, no question. No. I'm. Okay, I have one.
All those in favor? Motion passes four zero. All right. Uh, first public hearing is the adoption of general assistance appendices A through H. Open for motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing for general assistance appendices A through H.
Second.
Then move them seconded. All those in favor? They're open at six oh two P M. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the general assistance appendices A through H? Anyone online? Going once.
The only question I have is how do we let people know that this? Is available?
When you look top opposite.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, open for motion to close public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Close at six oh three P M. Open for motion on the general assistance appendices.
Move to approve the general assistance appendices A through H effective October one, twenty twenty five, through September thirty, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes four zero. Our second public hearing is liquor license for Jody's Cafe located at forty five Water Street. Open for motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing on the renewal of liquor license for Jody's Cafe.
Second.
All those in favor? Public hearing is open at six oh three P M. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the liquor license hearing for Jody's Cafe? Anyone online? Going once. Going twice. All right. Open for motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor? Public hearing is closed at six oh four P M. Open for motion on liquor license.
Move to approve the liquor license. Renewal for Jody's Cafe.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes four zero. Our third one, special amusement permit, Urbana Center. Richard Jordan, Wascassit Speedway LLC, open for motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open a public hearing to approve the special amusement permit application for Vanessa and Richard Jordan of Wascassit Speedway LLC.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor? Public hearing is open at six oh four P M. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the special amusement permit? Permit for Wascassit Speedway? Anyone online? Going once. Going twice.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor? Public hearing is closed at six oh five P M.
Yours.
All right. Uh, I'm assuming you're not all here because you want to see.
No.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Uh, open for motion to approve the special amusement permit.
Move to approve the special amusement permit application for Vanessa and Richard Jordan of Wascassit Speedway LLC.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Could be.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes four zero. As I was about to say, I'm sure you're not all here because you're excited about my town events calendar policy. Uh, as much. As much as that would be great. Um, we will go into public comment, but assuming I'm assuming I know what most of you are here for, and I just wanted to make um. A brief statement at the beginning with some additional information that might be helpful. Um, and please know that it is not our uh policy to respond to public comments. Um, so it won't be a question and answer, um, but I'll explain the process for that in a minute. Um, and we're happy to give this to anyone who wants it afterwards. Uh, the town has been communicating with a site assessor regarding the potential development of a data center in Wascassit. The property in question is a three hundred acre town owned parcel formerly owned by Man Yankee. This town owned property is located across the street from the former nuclear power plant and current spent fuel storage facility. Both the town and site assessor are conducting due diligence. We are asking questions of one another, but no formal proposal has been presented to the select board. Uh, the town signed an N D A because in as part of our due diligence process, we wanted to learn more about the potential investors. Because the project is conceptual in nature, the parties involved didn't want their identities known, which is very common early in development projects. We have not shared any additional information yet because we don't have additional information to share. When we have a formal proposal on the table, if we have a formal. Formal proposal on the table, we will share that information with public. The town is in the process of reviewing our ordinances to minimize the impact on the community. If that. If this possibility moves forward. And before a data is center is constructed on the parcel, it must complete a thorough public process, which is required to obtain state and local permits. Due to the interest in this property and other key owned, key town owned development parcels, as well as the fact that this parcel is tax required, we are working with the town attorney to establish a fair and thorough process for reviewing development proposals before any project is selected, if one is. The select board believes it has a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Wascassit to listen, study, and evaluate any proposal if there is one. Particularly of this magnitude with the potential to create jobs and increase the town's valuation. So I will just add that personally. Anything moving from here forward will be a very, very public process, and I cannot stress enough how much this is just an inquiry. I've seen people putting out there that a data center is coming, that we've already decided. None of that is true at all, and I would hope that you would agree that if someone came to our board or any board that you've ever voted for and had an idea like this, that you would want them to at least ask the beginning questions and then make a judgment. And we will absolutely do our due diligence. Everything from environmental concerns to traffic, to sound, light, water, community, all of that will be addressed and a million more things. If this moves forward, and we don't even know if it will. So I hope that that helps with a lot of the concerns. I understand that human nature finds uncertainty scary, and I'm sorry that if anyone felt like we were leaving them out of the process, it's just so early that there isn't more that we have to share because there is enough proposed. So I hope that that will help with some folks who are afraid of this, and I hope that you understand that we will do our due diligence. And it's just so, so early in the process. So that being said, public comment, and if you're not here for the data center, you could certainly partake in public comment, too. Um, the way we do our public comment here is that um, if you come forward, please state your name for the record so we can put it in the minutes. Um, and we ask that you stand near the, you can see there's a little microphone on the table there. And do your back to that wall so that both the public and the board can hear you and the folks on Zoom can hear you. Um, folks are limited to five minutes, um, and a total of thirty minutes. That's just how we run public comment for our regular meetings. If this moves forward, there will be many, many, many more opportunities for public comment. Um, but please just keep that in mind if, I don't know how many people want to speak, but um, just so you can make sure to get as many folks as possible. So, thank you for entertaining my my words. Um, and with that, if there's anyone who'd like to speak to something non-alcoholic or we agenda, please step forward.
I think you confused me a little bit by having to stand up because I was openly referring my notes as I did that, and the podium is not convenient, but that's okay. I understand. You are not like.
Sorry. Do you mind maybe going on the corner near Atulisa, just so you're not back to everybody? Thank you.
Um. And I understand I don't expect any comment from the board now, but I have a problem that I believe needs to be brought to your attention. So let me tell you the background. Please indulge me if I take a little bit more than five minutes. My wife, I moved to Wascassit in two thousand and nine, two thousand and eight. In two thousand and nine, I had a neighbor come knock on my door telling me that my driveway was on his property. I told him I would look into that. At that time, it cost me fifteen hundred bucks to have a boundary survey done that defined where the boundaries really are and where they stand today. He never bothered me again. I've only had two problems with the bound, two of the boundary points. Those problems were caused by the town of Wascassit. Because Wascassit paves over these boundaries. The first time they did it, I dug it up, marked it with fluorescent paint. I will not let the town of Wascassit destroy my boundary markers. It happened the second time. I came to Dennis, asked him to stop it. He didn't do it. He didn't get it done. It got paved over a second time. Again, I dug them up. And I marked with fluorescent paint, and I objected to the town of Wascassit doing that. The problem goes on. In twenty twelve, we decided to ask add to our kitchen, increase the size of our kitchen. At the time, we needed a building permit. We did the building permit, brought it to the code enforcement officer. He verified that we didn't violate any restrictions or any setbacks. Approved the permit. And then we added on the kitchen. In twenty nineteen, we decided to add an office and two programmers really turned out to be a barn. And again, we went to this code enforcement officer. He checked that we verified we did not have violated any restrictions or any of the setback requirements, signed a permit. We proceeded to add an addition to our property, and I got reassessed. Not a surprise, I was expecting, but I was reassessed with my property in twenty nineteen. Now. My wife and I are getting on in age. She's had both knees reconstructed. I've had both knees replaced. I'm beginning to show symptoms of spinal stenosis. Our bedroom is in the second floor, and we struggle each night to get up there. We decided, well, in the midst of all this, in July, she had a heart attack. We're in the hospital. We've been talking about this addition for years. Time to quit screwing around. Let's do it. We need it. Let's go put this addition to the house. Thanks to Chet Grover. Chet, we want to do this as soon as possible. And we get something done before winter sets in. This comment. Hey, subcontractors are very busy. I may be able to get people to do some tree removal, excavation. It is possible to get a foundation in before winter. This is in July. Hire a designer. Let's design this thing, get some real good dimensions on it. Okay, we've got enough dimensions. Let's go to the code enforcement officer for a permit in accordance with Article two of the zoning ordinances. George Chase, great guy, very accommodating, came out to the property, looked it over with us so we could show him where we were, where the house was, where the addition would be, and whether we would violate any restrictions or setback requirements. But we find out then, we built it, completed a building permit. What we found out then was that you had to have a recent boundary survey. Well, I've got one. It was done in two thousand and nine. There's no changes to it since I've been there. That's unacceptable to the planning board. It has to be a survey within six months. That tells you that if you have a survey done in February, it's no good in October. This is nonsense. Okay, you gotta go to the planning board. I still don't have a clear understanding of that. Article two says I can go to the code enforcement officer. Suddenly at, I'm stuck with the planning board. The planning board said, well, and I emailed with Shane and Carl Olson, said, you know, maybe you could get a survey, a surveyor to verify that there's been no boundary changes. Okay. So I called the surveyor who did the job. He's no longer in business. He's been absorbed by some organization in Portland. Called others, they don't respond. What do I do? Oh, well, I need to verify that the survey has not, that the, but the, the, the boundaries have not changed. Easy. I will go to the registry of deeds across the street, have them print out all actions that have taken place on my boundary since I live there. Provide that to the planning board. Surprise, surprise, it's no good. It has to be certified. Okay, well, let me try to get a survey involved here. So I've got a survey involved here. I got a quote from a surveyor, and then in the midnet quote, what they say is they're going to go to the registry of deeds and verify that they've been no changes. It's going to be the same thing that I did, only now I have to pay a surveyor to go do that and create a new sketch, a new boundary survey to the tune of twenty two hundred and eighty dollars. Totally unnecessary. It's nonsense. So here I am stuck now. Planning board did not make any decision. I've wasted a number of months. I'm now in October. I can't get that foundation done before winter unless I get to a special concrete mix and I take precautions during that foundation, it's more costly now than it was before. I would expect that this board really needs to take action, and I'm really concerned that we create, that the planning board has created restrictions and requirements that are not in the ordinances. They, they don't have the authority to go do that. If we're going to make changes to the ordinances, they need to be delivered to the people. Thank you. All I want to do is take care of my wife and I for the remaining days in a first floor master bedroom suite, and I can't believe that Wascassit creates these obstacles to go do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Most of them laugh that we don't do any kind of applause or the opposite. We just try to keep those rules, no matter what kind of discussion we're having. So I'm just asking, please don't. Yes, sir.
Hey. My name is Jim Stewart. I live at two sixteen Young Spike Road here in Wascassit. I just want to read a brief, brief, I emphasize brief, prepared statement, and then I have some documents I wanted to present to the plan, to the select board. We're a group of Wascassit residents who love our community and want to ensure that any growth or economic development to improve our community is well thought out. All potential positive and negative impacts of any proposal are thoroughly researched and documented. We ask for full transparency in discussions held with all parties involved in proposed projects. We trust that our town manager and select board will provide full disclosure to all town residents of any and all discussions that are held on R B M regarding proposed projects. This potential data center proposal has come to us with very little information. Uh, and on something that they have decades long impact on our community. We wish that all potential impact on our community, environment, shoreline health, fiscal management, property values, safety and quality of life are open for discussion. While we understand that there may be many fellow community members who are in favor of projects that may ease the taxpayers, taxpayers burden, all other impacts should be considered. To be clear, we are opposed to the development of a massive data center in Wascassit, but we are open to hearing all points of view on this issue. We want to present key factual information on the negative impacts these massive data centers have had in many communities across the country. I prepared some documentation on that, but I think it's very important people understand where that document, where does that information come from? Because God knows, we all know how much information is out there, and how much of it's not factual. So we went to many sources, uh, one including Data Center Watch. Data Center Watch is a key research project run by ten A Labs, an A I intelligence company that tracks grassroots opposition to data center developments across the United States. The project provides objective, fact based, and nonpartisan research on community resistance to new data center projects. Their parent company is ten A Labs. Their mission is to monitor and research local opposition to data center reconstruction. The nature of their research is objective, fact based, and nonpartisan. Data Center Watch also maintains a regularly updated database of local news articles, community meetings, and public policy debates related to data center development. Its research team collaborates with local stakeholders and experts to ensure accuracy and a competitive, comprehensive understanding of each community's concerns. Through its ongoing monitoring, the project aims to inform both policymakers and the public about emerging trends and potential impacts on the data center industry. They, ten A Labs is their parent company. Their website says that they deliver intelligence, collection, investigative research, and analysis for A I unicorns, whatever that is, Fortune ten companies and U S tech leaders. Their intelligence empowers security teams and technology leaders to stay ahead of evolving threats, drive innovation, and protect their brands. So I just wanted to be clear where this information that I'd like to hand out to the members, uh, where it comes from. It doesn't come from, it comes from a non, you know, unbiased uh source. Thank you very much. Appreciate. Your attention.
And this goes for anyone, if you have a statement that you're going to read and you'd like it to be put in the record, you're welcome to email it to us, and we can just put it in the record.
I'll be happy to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And once we're done with anyone in the room, I'll ask for anyone online. Is there anyone else in the room?
Hi, my name is Trevor Harris, and I'm.
Sorry, if you don't mind, just turn it a little there. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, my name is Trevor Harris. I'm a resident of Westport Island, and I'm hoping that, uh, and I'm not sure what the process is, but as a stakeholder uh to the air and the water uh that the data center will use, um, I'm interested to know in the future um what the benefits and benefits to Westport Island will be. Um, uh, I, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Sam Goode, and I also live on Westport Island. Um. I'm not opposed to development. I build power lines for living, so I'm where a lot of people consider the problem. I would like to have, I would like to ask all of you, as you go through this process, that you could give us information, and I think something that came up right off the bat that made everybody very nervous is the idea an N D A was signed. That is the absolute opposite of transparency. It gives everybody the E B G Vs, it's going to make everybody nervous oppositional right off the bat. These sites have been known to do massive environmental damage, and I'm somebody who deals in an industry that makes massive industrial environmental problems sometimes, but they suck up groundwater, they overload the grid, and C N P at peak loading right now is only exporting a hundred megawatts, so it can't even be supported by your current infrastructure. So how are they going to power it? They could use gas generators, you know, move in heavy fuel oil, you're going to put in small modular nuclear reactors, like, there are questions here that could have huge consequences, not just for Wascassit, but for Westport, Edgcombe, Georgetown, Booth Bay, Southport, and I don't think, I hope you're doing your due diligence, because once you get it here, it's a vampire, you're never getting rid of it, and it's going to do nothing good for you. So I hope that you do your due diligence thoroughly. Thank you.
Hi. Um, my name is Demi Kayak. I'm also a Westport Island resident, um, but my child goes to school in Wascassit, and we'll go to school in Wascassit. As a Westport Islander, we go grocery shop and we go to games, go to all the same stores, and we live in the same community as you do. Um, your statement said that if it's up to anybody, it will be a Wascassit town vote. Um, and I really hope that when you do your due diligence and you ask the questions, you keep the security, the safety and the health of Westport Island in mind. Uh, this has extremely terrified me and my family, my mother, my father, my brother, his children, my children. We all live on the island, and it has made us question if this is a place where I want to raise my children. We all live on the island and it has made us question if this is a place where I want to raise my children. I was raised from, across from Hudson Valley, across from Indian Point Nuclear Facility. And that is a cloud I had hanging over me as a child and I'll never forget what that felt like. That is nothing that I have. I have no interest in being a security target. I know that they're not going to consider building another bridge from Westport Island. For an evacuation route for us. We pass that site every day. When we leave our island and we come back home. We know more about what's happening over there, I think, than anybody else in West Cassett. As I've asked people in the schools and the grocery stores. Nobody has any clue. We do because we see the action there. We talk. Because we pass it every single day. It's going to affect every single Westport Islander. It is not going to affect everybody in West Cassett. As intimately as it will us. And I really hope that you're taking in into thought how it's going to affect us, our community. And all the communities around us, even though your town may hold the vote and the ultimate decision, as you've said in your statement. It's really going to affect all of us and we hope that you hold that in your, your decision making and in hearts. Thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room before I ask for anyone online?
Hi, I'm Bart Pena from Westport Island. I've been here before being Yankee. And I see a lot of parallels from what happened then. We had science, technology, government and. Corporate interests coming. And they came and sold us a bill of goods and told us that, you know, everything was going to be fine. They had just landed on the moon, so we believed it. They didn't tell us anything about the waste. In fact, my mother got up and asked, you know, what are you going to do with the waste? And they looked at each other. Excuse me, and said, lying almost from Indiana Jones, ten years later, well, our best men are on. We'll have, we have thirty years to figure it out. We'll get it. Now here we are fifty-five years later. There are many consequences with this technology and he's right. They gotta power it. It's gotta be powered somehow. And I think when we hear early talks. When a corporate interest to this degree is coming or interested. Especially on what we have here that's most valuable, which is time. The fact that you folks have the rights of way, it takes up to seven years. If, if they went to a place that didn't have rights of way to even secure those rights away. And when you're looking at what the president wants to do, what we supposedly need to do to be competitive. What you have here is most valuable to these corporations. And they're not just sniffing around in some trial balloon thing. There's a plan. And I would be very concerned about making sure you know as much as you can know about that plan. And I would definitely bring in all these communities. I would ask yourselves. You know, not only what is good for West Cassett, but you know, what's good for Westport Island, what's good for Mid Coast Maine. So that's basically the essence of it. And I have other resources if you need them and I'd be more than happy to share those with you. And thank you.
Anyone online who would like to speak? Feel free to either unmute yourself or use the hand raise. Option. Or if there's anyone else in the room. Hey. All right, we'll close public comment. Thank you. I, I do really appreciate how much you all care about your community and please know that we do too. And when I say community, I mean the entire surrounding area and not just West Cassett folks. So. Thank you and we'll let you know when we have something to share. Um. Moving on to new business, town events, calendar policy and submission form. So I asked for this to be on the agenda. Basically with the new website, we have an opportunity to have a much more robust calendar that. All kinds of organizations throughout town and area could put their public events on. So I've put together a sample policy because I think it'd be good to have some ground rules. And it's been gone over in terms of it, it covers, you know, it's got to be respectful content. It's not just a place for commercial, like. For a gamble, we, we put an event about an early bird sale for Christmas, but we wouldn't be putting individual shop sales on there every time they have a sale, in other words. So I've, we have the policy in there and then the community event submission form. And at least through the end of my term in June, I've offered to be the person who gets those submissions. And, and make sure that they're updated on the town website to see how it works. And then we'll evaluate at that point if it's something we should continue and if so, who should do that. So happy to answer any questions, but I'm hoping this will be a good resource.
Is there going to be an online version of the form? It's a rather long form, so the.
It's a Google form.
It is a Google.
Yeah, yeah, it's just printed version that makes it look really long.
Yeah, okay.
And also if.
I'm looking at it and I'm like, that is a little.
Yeah, and I, I felt strongly that there should be a select board policy for it. But the form can certainly be altered at any time if we think of other fields that need to be there or don't need to be there or whatever.
Yeah.
So.
No, it'll be nice. The library can post on it.
Yes. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the. Town of West Cassett community event calendar submission policy.
Motion made.
Thank you.
Second.
They moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? None. All those in favor? Motion passing four zero. So we'll get this out as much as we can. Please spread the word. We'll put the link for the submissions on the website and we'll start calculating. Um. Down to eight B, Peregrine Turbine Technology Proposal for a Virge Point Development. David.
Well, I have the ability to.
If you know how to use it.
That's a big one. Well, I do have page copies because I anticipate that might be safe. So there's. Is there an HPMI?
Yes.
I'll wear it until you know it's not.
Well, everything.
Great. So. I'll do both. I'll hand out the copies and. Well, put it on screen so people can see it back that way. Please don't be alarmed by the thickness of this little packet in and out. It's about one side printed. And only about less than half of it am I going to present. The rest is supporting information. Let me just give you a stat there.
David, want me to hand those out to the public record?
No, I'm going to keep these, I'm going to keep these up here and I'll, I'll present the same item on the screen. Thanks for asking.
Do we have access to that?
This document?
Yeah.
That's a great question.
Yeah, it, it becomes public now. Yeah.
Okay, well, that being the case, what I could do is give you the electronic version of it and then you can disseminate that at will. Is that?
We can put it with the documents of this meeting. So you'll, if you go to the agenda for this meeting, then we'll add it. Yeah. Would you share your extra copies?
I, I guess I'm going to follow Peter's suggestion and let you guys. There's, there's nothing top secret about this. I just wanted to quickly supposedly tell. Now I wish they had the ability to, I'm exactly excited. I'm not giving away the trade secrets, but. It will be good. Fortunately. I think I'm, I think I'm going to stand. That'll start everybody. Okay, so I'll try to stand up to the side of us.
And for anyone online, I'm sorry that you can't really see the screen. We'll be attaching this presentation to the documents for the meeting afterwards. So you'll be able to see them after if you'd like.
So my name is David Staff. I'm the CEO and Chief Technology Officer for Peregrine Turbo Technologies. We have our offices currently in West Cassett. For those of you who don't know that, we've been here a long time. So I'm here to make a proposal tonight to the select board about the development of some properties that are surrounding. Our current offices, which are located behind the Mason Station. Location in the area that was previously a subdivision development. And so we, we have the two buildings back behind Mason Station. That's our current office. And we have a need for growth. So let me tell you a little bit about myself. Who is this guy? I'm not a Johnny come lately. I've been in this community for over twenty years. And I started off when I purchased a hangar at West Cassett Airport that were being newly constructed. And then shortly thereafter moved my business at the time of my consulting business, which is Peregrine Consulting. To the West Cassett Airport. And as a pilot, that was my motive for going there, being a pilot. I love being at airports. I can't help myself. Shortly thereafter formed founded Ocean Point Aviation LLC. The purpose of doing flight instruction and aerial tours, which I did for a number of years there. And during that time period. Was one of the charter members and the charter board member for the West Cassett Chamber of Congress, which was formed during that period. And I served as the chairman of the board the second term and for a couple of years thereafter. So I've been committed to this community and investing in this community for a long time, created jobs here. With Wash, I haven't got to that yet. So I mentioned chamber of the board or chairman of the board for the chamber. Operated the, after a while, I took over the FBO operations at the West Cassett Airport, which is providing. Fuel and aircraft services to general aviation aircraft coming from the airport. And did that for a number of years, two thousand eight till two thousand twelve. In two thousand twelve, I realized I was much better at designing jet engines than I was at running airports. So made a switch from founding a company called Peregrine Turbine Technologies. Which was founded for the purpose of commercializing a technology that we invented, that I invented. And I partnered with a, a business development guy, really solid guy, lots of experience. So he and I formed a company in two thousand twelve and we ran it out of the upstairs of the, the FBO building there at the airport. Continued to add staff, created jobs here in the community and ran out of space after a while. And we learned that we, the two properties. The two homes that were built as part of that subdivision behind Mason Station. Were, were placed on the market by the town. And I made an offer on those and acquired those and moved all of our employees and we needed that space. We were growing quickly. Into that building and made one an office and another overflow. And so we were there to this day and have continued to develop this new technology, which I'll explain in just a second. In the meantime, I end up on the board of Efficiency Main Trust and served even as the chairman of that board for about a year and a half. And. I guess I jumped ahead of this one already. Okay, we also purchased a large hangar at West Cassett Airport. Because we needed a place to do our prototype testing of this new kind of turbine engine that we've developed. And shortly after that, I made an offer on what I'm calling the garage building, which is a building. That's adjacent to the Mason Station Building, the little brick building. At the time, my offer was accepted by the board. However, it was quickly scuttled because the planning board determined that the building was sitting on the newly defined roads. So part of it was owned by the town, part of it was owned by Mason Station LLC. So they couldn't sell it to me. That fell through and. Let's see, after that, subsequent to that, we saw the Ash Pond lots, which are also adjacent to the Mason Station Building. Those were cleaned up under a government grant and made suitable for development. And I made a, but was a very modest offer admittedly to the select board at that time for those lots. So that I can expand into that space. At that time, a developer had arrived and was interested in discussing developing the surrounding parcels at Mason Station. That particular developer had a, an option, still does, an option to buy the Mason Station Building proper. So that's not, that's not in consideration in this discussion. So sorry for being long-winded on that. I just wanted you to know that I've, I've been investing in this community for a long time. I believe in this community. I think it has tremendous potential that's frankly unrealized. And so we want to contribute to the realization room. So what am I requesting tonight? I'm asking the board, well, let me go through this point by point. So we have breakthrough technology in the energy center. We've already talked a little bit about energy time, which is interesting to me. We have, we have large orders that are being placed for our engines. And they're going to be manufactured in Barrington, New Hampshire. Because I can get access to a large square footage of manufacturing space. Now, these engines, the parts get machined elsewhere. So we don't have any noisy or dirty operations. We're putting parts together and then shipping them to the sites where they'll produce electric power in this case. There's other applications. So that, we, we're going to require substantial facilities. To develop, the continued development of the technology and to support all the activities that go around market development, et cetera. And I'll get into that a little more as well. So what I'm here for tonight is I want to express my desire to the select board. To purchase the remaining land that was tax foreclosed from Mason Station LLC way back in two thousand eight or whatever it was. So that we can support the, the facilities requirements going ahead for us. We also have an interest. In some of the land that starting to talk about tonight regarding the data center. We have an interest in that land as a potential for producing electric power at large scale. Because there was an electric substation just adjacent. And the good news, I think, for the community is that we have a completely carbon-free. Electric power generation technology, which is based on geothermal. Now, nobody in Maine has ever talked about doing geothermal. And there's a reason for that. It's that it's not very hot until you get way down deep. And so the technology hasn't existed yet to explode that until now. And I'll explain that in a little bit too. So I'm interested, this is, this is depicting the birth point where our current buildings are here and here. And so I'm interested in the remaining land, which is colored yellow here. There's some errors here, like this lot is actually part of Mason Station. And the roads are also part of Mason Station LLC. So that's, that's not on the blocks. But the rest of that, that land is tax acquired. And, and that's the, the land that I'm interested in acquiring to support our development needs. So. See, I jumped ahead accidentally. There we go. All right. So I mentioned that we have an interest. This is not really the forefront issue for us. It's sort of a back burner issue. But I've often had, I've done a lot of fun things in here and I love this little parcel. I think it has great potential. And I, I completely understand all the, the concerns about data centers, et cetera. And I would also be concerned about any sort of energy production plan, except for geothermal. Because it is such a small footprint. Low noise, no emissions, zero emissions. In fact, it's carbon negative because you have to charge our system with carbon dioxide and it remains hermetically sealed underground. But that's, that's probably a discussion for another day. And I want to stay focused on the main interest we have right now. Which is the Virge Point properties that are still owned by the town. And have not been, have not been developed. So this, the purpose that we have for this property, these properties that surround our current. Location is that we need to, to create a research and development facility. We need to create subsidiary, subsidiary incubators because our technology actually applies to a dozen different market sectors. And each one is, is going to be a separate corporation with exclusive market rights into those different applications. Everything from, from nuclear to biomass power to energy storage as an alternative to lithium ion batteries, et cetera. So there's a bunch of subsidiary work. There's going to be a lot of office space requirements. We have, we have need of an advanced concept development, skunk works, where we can do testing and development of new, the new technology. We have, we have need of an advanced concept development skunk works where we can do testing and development and new, the new technology uh, applications that we have in mind. We need a, a headquarters, uh, sort of a corporate office and engineering headquarters. And we need maintenance facilities to support all of that infrastructure. And we need uh, function and meeting space, et cetera, and all that, oh, and also a prototype machine shop. So that, you're gonna see where I'm looking to place all of those as we go to the next pages. So, as I said, these are the two buildings that we currently occupy. And this, these are the, the subdivision lots that were defined uh, long before our time. And they're not terribly practical, there, there needs to be some revision of the lot lines or redefinition of the, of the lots going forward, but the, the space is adequate to, to do a few things in this block, one is to provide our prototype machine shop in this block here. And then I want to do our, our meeting space, function room and employee fitness center in that space and provide some additional employee parking, I've got only a small amount of parking right here now and so people end up along the streets a lot of time, which is not ideal. So that, that's what we call the Ice Pond Lots, this is a, uh, this is the pond that is, has a reversing falls at the end. And across the pond from us is the Cushman Preserve. But it's, it's a beautiful spot, it's pristine, it needs to be protected as such, because it is uh, it's definitely uh, sort of a crown jewel of the city of Wiscasset. On the other side of the Soundpoint Road, sorry, it's actually uh, I forget the name of the road, it runs down this way. So the Ice Pond Lots are down here, this is on the other side of the peninsula. So you have Hilton Pond, which is freshwater pond, a dam, a dam here. And this is high old mud flat, new kind of, of uh, area. So we want to place our R and D skunk works here. And we need a production test cell because our engine that's currently getting lots of traction is a twenty-five megawatt engine, that's, that's the equivalent of thirty-three thousand horsepower. In order to test them, we have to produce a bunch of energy to run them before we ship them to the field. And we determined that the only sensible way to do that is by having a geothermal well adjacent to where we test our engines. And so that raised another uh, opportunity that I want to mention on, on one of the next slides. These are the lots that are on the northern point of the peninsula. The Mason Station Building is down here, these were divided up as house lots in the original plan. I want to place the corporate headquarters and engineering center here, additional parking there, some maintenance um, uh, opportunity there. But what you see up here is a block for fifty megawatts of geothermal power. So what we'd like to do is drill geothermal wells out there, place two of our twenty-five megawatt units. They would produce baseload electric power for the grid because you have a grid interconnect right adjacent to that. And so we would be able to put power onto the grid and at the same time, we would have the, the, the energy flow required in order for us to test our units as they become off, come off the production line. And so they'll be manufactured in New Hampshire, brought up to Wiscasset, tested in our test cell. And then shipped to the sites where they'll be uh, finally installed. And we've got a lot of sites in progress right now in both California and Texas. And we've even got some in, in Spain, in Germany, in the Canary Islands that are in progress right now. So there's, there's huge opportunities, but we need infrastructure to support this. And so that's part of how we do it, but the thing I should mention is, and I skipped this on, I think on my, my dossier, was that um, I was the Chairman for the, the Wiscasset Waterfront Working Group Committee that was tasked with proposing a sort of a vision statement of how to um, optimize the value to the public of the Wiscasset waterfront assets. And there's lots of them. One of them is this entire birch point. And so that became a minor focus of our discussions as well as areas off to the town. But some of you might know that there used to be a bridge between the end, the north point of this peninsula all the way out to White's Island, and you can still see the, the pylons that are out there in the water that uh, that you would bear witness to that existence. And then of course, the bridge on the other side of White's Island made a direct connection to the town. So there's an opportunity for public traffic, public walking traffic to enjoy like perimeter trails around this whole point and then all the way over to downtown across this walking bridge. We thought that was a great idea. Uh, I still think it does, it's a good idea and it's something that I would want to uh, pursue with private money, like donations and, and even our corporate money to, to put something like that into place as, as actually a public asset that would open up access to, to that. On the other side of Mason Station, which is right here now, um, this is where the Ash Pond Lots are, this was the building I tried to buy unsuccessfully. And you can see it's, it's over the line of the lot. Um, what I'd like to place down here are two buildings for subsidiary development, those will be office buildings with employee parking. And what you'll note is that I'm also showing another bridge, this was actually something that was in the original Point East proposal, is to put a bridge across to Cushman Preserve, because there's a beautiful walking trail that goes all the way around the outside of, of the Ice Pond. And you get out to this point, then it's a dead end. Um, there, I don't know how easy it would be to do something like this, but we thought when we were doing the working group, that this would be a tremendous asset that allow people to walk all the way through Cushman Preserve, cross over the, the reversing falls and then somehow connect that to the north point where you have another bridge going all the way to town. So those are just sort of public access features. And I'm not trying to put anything controversial on the table, because that would all be, that would be a completely separate process from the development of our facilities, but I guess what I'm trying to communicate is that we have a mind towards servicing the public interests on this peninsula because it, it truly is a, a beautiful spot. So, just so you know what it is that we've developed, this is our system here now. Uh, there's a number of pieces that go into this, there's a gearbox here that's made and produced in, in what, uh, Lufkin, Texas. This gear, this generator here is made in a variety of places, but I'm on my way to, to Prague next week to talk to the, the principal manufacturer for those generators, this is a twenty-five megawatt generator. And this is the part that we make. Our technology is very compact for its energy, for its power class, and it's because of the technology we're using, which I won't bore you with. But this is breakthrough technology. And now that it's being combined with advanced technology on the will, on the wealth side, the wealth production side, um, we're teamed with a Texas company that, that's been in oil and gas for thirty years and they're seeing the writing on the wall now, they want to go into geothermal well creation and they, they've done this successfully. Even in the Antarctic, if you can believe that, anywhere from Beverly Hills to the Antarctic. So these guys, they, they have perfected the craft of what they call hot rock uh, deep drilling. And they've drilled wells as deep as over thirty thousand feet down. And they can drill two wells and then connect them at the bottom. And by virtue of doing that, you can create a loop that allows you to pass a fluid down to the, to the hot rocks, collect the heat, bring it to the surface and use it to drive a turbine, which is our turbine. So we're teamed with this company and the combination of our two technologies is creating breakthrough capabilities. It means now you can put geothermal in places like Wiscasset where the heat is really deep and you have to drill way down. They're thinking, after looking at the geological surveys, they think it's gonna be about twenty thousand foot deep well. Uh, and that will bring up enough energy in order to drive a twenty-five megawatt machine. And you can place wells adjacent to wells, which is what they're depicting here. So each of these wells would produce about fifteen megawatts, so to do the fifty megawatts out on the point would probably take about four of these. And you can see the footprint of these is very small and all of the equipment is down below the surface. So uh, naturally our equipment is above the ground, but the, the footprint for the amount of power you can produce is very small and zero emissions and very little noise, you, you wouldn't hear it from a hundred feet away. You, you'd hear the, the transformers on the birch point before you hear anything that many of ours would have been running. So I think I've already kind of gone through this, we've got breakthrough technologies developed right here in Wiscasset. This is where it was invented, this is where we've developed it and this is where we tested it at our, at our test facilities out here. So this is a, this is Wiscasset technology. And uh, the wells, of course, are not our technology that's from Texas. But they're very excited about coming to Maine and actually drilling wells here, and I talked to them about the granite, I thought that's gotten too hard. They said, oh, no, no, we do granite all the time in Texas and we know how to do that stuff, but we do it better than anybody else. And so these, these are the guys that have the, the capability and they're really interested in this. Um, particularly in the uh, the buried landing area too, where there's an opportunity to produce as much as nine hundred megawatts because of the capacity of the adjacent subsiftion. Now, that's, that's a lot of units, but there's a lot of land over there and I'm not talking about a data center sized installation, so again, that'll be a future discussion, we can talk about that and I'm not trying to create any controversy in that. Uh, what I am interested in winning is communicating that, that our vision for the development of Birch Point is to create an energy R and D campus that will have the aesthetics of a college campus, so to speak, in some degree. Uh, we have an art detective mind we don't work with, it's very early, we haven't had the, the discussions with them yet. Uh, but we know we want it to have elements of public access so that the public can enjoy some of those beautiful features down there. And that may include things like public restaurants, et cetera, not sure. But uh, so there's a lot of work to be done, but that's sort of the broad brushstrokes of the vision. And uh, wanted to start there and say that we're interested in, in making a bid on those properties. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Dave.
Hope that wasn't too long.
Um, I'm not sure how, what folks feel, but I would suggest that um, because we didn't have this information before the meeting, I'd like us to put it on the agenda for discussion for the next board meeting, so us and the public can have a chance to read through everything, uh, and then a couple of other questions. If uh,
What's the date of the meeting for that?
The twenty-first, the twenty-first?
First and third Tuesdays, third Tuesdays.
Oh, this month then, twenty-first?
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah, I know where you're at.
Does that, does that work for folks, so we can? Yep, okay, thank you, Dave.
It's got a pleasure in six months.
So.
Or if you want to, either inside of any of them.
All right. Uh, moving down to AC sewer payment request, Richard Hayward, uh, ninety-six Backroad, uh, it's recommended by uh, the Superintendent of the Sewer Department. Open for motion.
I move to approve the sewer payment with fast in the amount of ten hundred fifteen dollars eighty-five cents as recommended by Robert Cowley, wastewater treatment plant system temp.
Second. Then moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes four zero. All right, we've got uh, a very nice surprise of many businesses, um, new business license applications, uh, we can take these all at once, is that, okay? Uh, so we have Chase Small Craft, Soap Light LLC, Final Limited Motorsports, Mid Coast Creative Studio, Uncle Sean Fish and Chips, Calling Your Wild Astrology and Zivon Fitness. Open for motion.
I move to approve the business license applications for Chase Small Craft, Soap Light LLC, Final Limited Motorsports, Mid Coast Creative Studio, Uncle Sean's Fish and Chips, Calling Your Wild Astrology and Zivon Fitness.
Second. They move and seconded, any questions or discussions? Lovely to see so many new businesses. All those in favor? Motion passes four zero. Uh, Town Manager's Report, anything you'd like to add?
Um, yes, I did, so I, I mentioned to you guys that uh, motor rigs are R and D. Company is no longer interested in serving us, um, and so I have gone out and worked. Um, solicited a proposal from a local company, um, you guys asked me to get further quotes, I did, I only got one. Um, I sent out four and I got one back. Um, and it's twice as much as the proposal that I had, I would see from E S. Um, they were thirteen thousand dollars a year and um, this digital uh, place in Brunswick was for their, for their stripped down version was twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. Plus a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour for anything um, outside of scope of that. And we are in a desperate need of having to get somebody in here. Uh, we're having technology issues that need to be straightened out. Um, so with Board's approval, I am going to uh, ask you to just allow me to sign the contract with E S and move this forward. The attorney has already uh, gone through it and redlined it for changes that are beneficial to the town, but um, we're headed to a crisis and I've got to get this done. The twentieth.
You need a, you need a motion or do you want, just want a consensus?
I just, I, I would like a motion that allow me to uh, use my discretion and get this, this contract.
Well, too, Jackie's gonna want some language.
Yeah.
Fast bounce. Um, I just need a motion to, um,
authorize.
Authorize the Town Manager to, um, contract.
Execute a contract with?
E S S.
E S S.
E S. E, E, E S.
I think a motion already, please?
Two.
Two.
E, E S.
Seven, technology.
Yeah, what is this for?
Technologies, it was, it's in, I, it's, yeah, I see.
It's, it's not on the agenda, Jackie, because it just was pulled together today, right?
Remove by Bill, seconded by Pam.
Here we go. All right, any further discussion on that one? All those in favor? Motion passes four zero.
Thank you for doing the due diligence.
Anything else you want to add to the report?
Um, no, just reminded that I won't be here tomorrow on Thursday, I'll be there at the convention.
All right.
Move to John.
Second. All those in favor? We are adjourned at seven oh two P M, thank you.
Great.